Can you get the text there? Hmm? Right now? It is now six thirty and we're gonna ask for Chaplain Leonard Hines to give the invocation. Then we're gonna move forward with the pleasure of allegiance. And lastly, Chairwoman Woods, when I be here just found out, her granddaughter is six, so I'm asking everyone to keep her family in your prayers.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you for this opportunity tonight as we assemble. And now we lift up Commissioner Wood and the grandchild, dear Lord, that you touch them, heal, work in their lives. And Lord, we ask you to bless this meeting, the things that will be said, the decisions made, that that would honor you, and that we'd be mindful of the responsibilities set before us. Bless this meeting, please, all in authority, all the administration, and pray that things would go forward. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll call this meeting to order on Tuesday, August the eighteenth. County Clerk, can you make any amendments to the agenda that need to be made?
Yes, we have a few items. We need to add a resolution approving an IGA with the City of McDonough regarding McDonough Parkway Extension. We'll add this as the first item under the SPOS presentations. We need to remove, at the request of the Henry County Water Authority, item eight. We need to remove item five, the commendation for police department. We're gonna do that at a later date. And we need to remove item... I think it's... Oh, sorry. The ATL Transit item, which is...
Fourteen.
Item fourteen A. We are removing that one at this time, and that is all.
Can you repeat that one more time, all of those items, 'cause I can hardly hear you over here?
All of them?
Yeah.
We need to add a resolution approving an IGA with the City of McDonough regarding McDonough Parkway Extension. We'll add that as the first item under the SPOS presentations. We need to remove, at the request of the Henry County Water Authority, item eight. We need to remove item five, commendation for police department. And we need to remove item fourteen, the BOC item to support the ATL. That is all.
All right. With that said, I'm gonna ask for a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Move. We have a motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. First on the agenda is the appointment... District One appointment of the Henry First Board of Directors, the appointment of Vanessa Jackson. Is there a presentation? Okay. You have any comments on your appointment?
No.
Okay. So I'm gonna ask for a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion carries. Second on the agenda is the appointment of... To appoint... The appointment to McIntosh Trails Community Board Service. Susan Craig and Chuck Simmons can have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion carries. Next item is the appointment to the Zoning Advisory Board, Willie Brown. Can have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The following items... The following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda, the Chair will provide an opportunity to remove items. First up is public safety. A resolution to accept a grant from the Georgia Association of Medical Services for the amount of ten thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and six cents. Next on the consent agenda is a resolution approving the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatuses and SCBA bottles in the amount of sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two. Next on the consent agenda is technology services, a resolution approving the renewal of the network voice hardware infrastructure, annual smart net maintenance agreement. And that ends the consent agenda. Can I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor of the consent agenda? Item carries. That ends the consent agenda. Next on the agenda is public safety. Fire Department, resolution approving the purchase of Hazmat Elite Command Package that includes Hazmat Elite Monitoring and Training and Monitoring Use in the amount of fifty-five thousand, two hundred. And Chief Harrisman will be presenting.
Good evening. Just here to speak briefly on the purchase of a Hazmat Monitor for our team. Basically, the monitor is an infrared spectrometer. It adds to our ability to detect and analyze unknown chemicals. Enhances our ability as a team, enhances our ability with the growing fentanyl threats, other opioids and things that we can identify that are unknown. The price is fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. It's a purchase upfront and then one hundred percent funded by grant funding on the backside.
All right. Any comments from the board? Okay, I'm gonna call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Any comments from the board? All in favor? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is SPOS. I think this is an act of the McDonough IGA. It's a resolution approving the amendment and the bid award for construction of the McDonough Parkway Extension. SPOS four. Rocky is the presenter.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. The first item is the one that was added, amended. And the first item is a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of McDonough for cost-sharing project with McDon... For the McDonough Parkway Extension, which is a SPOS four major project. And the amount that the intergovernmental agreement is for seven hundred thousand dollars.
Any questions from the board? Can we have a motion?
I have one question.
Oh, you have a motion?
I have one question.
Go ahead. District one.
Rocky, the seven hundred thousand dollars, have they committed to that yet, or has it...
No, sir. As far as I know, they have not committed yet. That's why we're bringing it today. The next resolution that you'll see is for the construction, and we do have a budget amendment to cover that seven hundred, just in case. We don't get it approved.
So amended the agenda to add the IGA that we will be providing to the City of McDonough so that we can receive their commitment of the seven hundred thousand dollar fund.
That's the...
Yes, that's... Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners with comments? All right. With that said, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Last chance for comments. All in favor? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of McDonough regarding GDOT traffic signals at a one-way... At a one-way. Rocky, you're up again.
But, Chair, before we go to that one, we have another resolution before that one, and it's the approval of the low bidder for the McDonough Parkway. The low bidder... We received five bids for the McDonough Parkway. And the low bidder, as you stated before, it was CMEs for five million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. And we also requesting a budget amendment for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars needed for construction. And the fund is available in the budget of Pigsfield Road from New Hope to the bridge. So the SPOS Department is requesting the approval of this budget amendment and the approval of the low bidder for the amount stated.
Well, that ends Rocky's presentation. Does any commissioners have any questions?
I have a question. This is... The movement was from all... It was from District One, right?
That is correct. All the funds are from District One.
Any other questions? Well, we have a motion on the table.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any other comments? All in favor? Motion passes. All right, Rocky, you can move forward with the resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement.
Yes, sir. We already... The board already approved paying the county portion for the signal at Steroid Twenty and Eighty-One, McDonough Parkway. This is an intergovernmental agreement for the City of McDonough to contribute fifty thousand dollars towards this project. Once the City approves it, then we can move forward with GDOT to go ahead and install the signal. Or the signal is off, but just turn it on.
So any commissioners have any questions?
I have a question about... I know that we're getting ready to do the widening for State Road Twenty Eighty-One. And do we have a timeline to make sure that this is not... I mean, I guess, Commissioner, I don't know if you've checked to see the timeline or how much you're spending for this, knowing that the road widening was coming, and is this gonna stay in place once the road is widened so that we're not spending money? And then they're gonna widen the road, and you've spent this money for this traffic signal?
Right. So the cost is roughly about eighty-three thousand dollars. And it's gonna be temporary. When the widening comes through, as you all know, there's gonna be a roundabout at that location. So you're looking about three or so years that it's gonna be running.
Okay.
Operational.
The contract installed because it's one-way pass. And it's gonna have it in place only for three days.
For three days.
And so when we found out, of course, we contacted Rocky and he contacted GDOT.
Well, three years for a relief is good for eighty-three thousand dollars, so...
So, yeah, we'll have until completion of the roundabout, correct?
Correct.
So do we have a motion for item being?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any other comments from any commissioners? All in favor? Next on the agenda is a resolution approving a bid award for cement stabilized base reclamation construction. District Two, Rocky, you're still up.
Yes, Commissioner. SPOS four was approved by the voters in November of twenty thirteen, and District Two resurfacing widening and surface trimming is an approved District Two SPOS four project. Seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department per bid nineteen dash oh-three to improve various roads in District Two. There were three... We received three sealed bids, and the lowest was... Bid was Atlanta paving and concrete construction, providing a low bid of nine hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and nine cents. There are eight roads that we're looking at doing some reclamation or resurfacing, and those are Meridian Drive, Hayden Court, Stephanie Court, Summer Leah Drive, Victoria Lane, Leah Court, Olivia Court, and Pace Creek Road. The roads are funded through the SPOS four District Two resurfacing account, and funding is available. Staff recommends approval of the low bid.
Any commissioners have any comments? With that said, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is emergency management. First item is a resolution to accept funds from the state of Georgia in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty cents. Don Ash, presenter.
Good evening, Commissioners. On October eighteenth, Hurricane Irma affected the state of Georgia in the southeast. President Bush... President Trump declared disaster resolution forty-three thirty-eight, and these are funds that we were able to recoup for expenses that the county incurred, including debris management, protective measures, and damages to county properties. The breakdown of those funds would be for ninety-six thousand for debris management, ninety-six four fifty-one oh-six, twenty-three four ninety-four ninety-two for building damages, additional forty-two five for... To meet our insurance deductible and damages to our roof and our administration building. Seventy-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-two cent for protective measures, and an additional thirteen thousand for debris management. Those funds were generated through the presidential declaration process in the paper we filed on behalf of the county for those damages.
Thank you, Don. Do we have a motion? Move to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board? All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution authorizing a nine-one-one charge on prepaid wireless telephone services within Henry County. Don Ash, still at the podium.
In reference to this, in this past year, the Georgia's legislature changed the funding and the scope of work for nine-one-one, creating the nine-one-one authority. Previously, prepaid cell phones were only accessed a charge of seventy-five cent per call. This legislation and authority brings it in line to a dollar fifty, just like all other phone service and providers in the state of Georgia for the delivery of nine-one-one services.
Okay, that concludes Don's presentation. Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution authorizing nine-one-one charge on prepaid wireless... Wireless and voice over internet protocol. And Don Ash is still at the podium.
Changes to the nine-one-one authority and the creation of the nine-one-one authority as it relates to nine-one-one charges. This provides us an opportunity also to collect the nine-one-one fees that are generated over voice over internet protocol type phones. These funds will be transferred to the county through the nine-one-one authority. So it changes the direction and the flow of the money for nine-one-one services, which previously came from the subscribers. One additional thing that this legislation does do, it provides enforcement capabilities that were never in place before, so we can recoup all the funds that are due to our county for the services we provide.
Do we have a motion? Second? Any comments? All in favor? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is planning and economic development. This is a public hearing. We have a resolution accepting the completed County-City's Joint Comprehensive Plan and Twenty Forty Update. Who is presenting all this? Dante Gibbs presenting.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. It is my pleasure to present to you this evening the resolution before you to transmit the Henry County City's Joint Twenty Forty Comprehensive Land Use Plan to the Atlanta Regional Commission for the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Review and Approval. Once the Department of Community Affairs review is complete and we receive their approval, the new Henry County City's Joint Twenty Forty Comprehensive Land Use Plan will come back to the Board of Commissioners for official adoption. At this time, I would like to take a quick moment to thank the citizens of Henry County for those who have participated in this endeavor. I would also like to thank the Henry County Board of Commissioners, the Henry County Zoning Planning... I'm sorry, Henry County Zoning Advisory Board, our Stakeholder Committee participants, our Steering Committee participants, the Atlanta Regional Commission, County Management, the Henry County Planning and Zoning Staff, the City of Locust Grove, the City of McDonough, the City of Hampton, and our project management team. And I would simply like to say thank you for working together, for your hard work, for your diligence, for your dedication, for your feedback, your respective expertise, and collective support over the last almost two years in galvanizing our new Henry County City's Joint Twenty Forty Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Thank you all, most sincerely. And with that said, I believe Jared Lombard is here from the Atlanta Regional Commission, and if he wishes to say anything at this time, I would like to give him that opportunity. All right, he declines. So this being a public hearing, I will yield the floor for those who wish to speak regarding the public hearing process.
So we'll open it up. Is it five minutes, Stephanie, or three minutes? So we'll open the floor for anybody that is against this particular plan, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Mr. Long, why don't you just open it? Anyone wants to speak on it one way or the other?
Okay. We'll open it up to anyone that wants to speak, so... Please provide... During this, do we ask for them to provide their name and address?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Is this... Can you hear me? Okay. I'm Sonny Strickland. I live at fifteen oh-seven Pigsfield Road in Locust Grove. And if I could approach, I'll give you a copy of a small, short outline that I have here. It's in large print, so I can read it. There is in this, to the best of my knowledge, and from my conversations with Mr. Gibbs, a proposal to remove and rescind the future commercial land use plan in certain areas of the county. My property is affected by that. It's included in that. And the diminution in value that occurred in my property already from the change in the RA zoning in two thousand eight, two thousand nine was pretty severe in itself. The possibility of some future recovery in that property would be a good thing, but if it's rescinded, then it becomes impossible, and the value of my property is further damaged, and there's more diminution in value, which damages me. So that being said, if I could read this, and I'll try to be brief, it'll keep me online. Regarding the proposed changes rescinding the existing commercial zoning shown on the future land use map of Henry County, in particular, the potential commercial zoning that was introduced by Mr. Dante Gibbs, Director of Planning and Zoning at last month's Planning and Zoning Meeting, which is before the Board of Commissioners today. In that meeting, I asked why it was being proposed that the potential zoning be eliminated, and Mr. Gibbs responded by saying that the two thousand eight, two thousand nine map was done anticipating growth that did not happen due to the economic downturn that occurred. Well, that was then, and now it's two thousand eighteen, and the economy is stronger than it has been in decades, and the growth is occurring in Henry County and most everywhere else. And those growth patterns, which were anticipated and most likely researched then, are likely to occur in the near future. Rescinding the proposed land use plan and/or certain categories of it could most certainly have a very negative effect on landowners and potential for future business growth in those areas. Keep in mind, any application would still have to come before the Board of Commissioners for approval, so why rescind or eliminate something that has been in place for approximately ten years without any negative effect on the residents of those areas of the county or the county? Such a change could, however, have a very negative effect on the property owners in those areas, and most certainly could cause a diminution in value of their respective properties.
Thank you. Anyone else interested in speaking? I gave you a few minutes, a few seconds over.
Thank you.
We only have three minutes.
You know, about a year ago, and this ain't no knock on Dante. You put a pretty picture up there, but when you build warehouses all over the county, it kinda messes up those plans. You know, I got a four-by-six map at my office. I'll give it to you. If you fly into Henry County, it looks like a checkered board of warehouses. The white roofs are just everywhere. Dante, that is a lack of planning. Now, a year ago, I took Mr. Wilson out to the golf course, the most natural place in America for an amphitheater. I asked him to kinda throw the idea out. You build amphitheaters there, you got the parking lots from this building right out there, and you got all these land across, you got the college parking lot over there, you got all the infrastructure ready. All you gotta do is just build a stage, and you got a natural amphitheater by the lake. The valley effect, the sound effect, and it's accessible from four directions. Immediate access to I-75. All of the... All of the infrastructure is there without all that extra cost. And then I look at that, and I've been looking at it while it was out there in the vestibule as well, and I am a, and if anybody doubts my ability, I designed the first live, work, and play community in Georgia, which they now copy it in Atlanta, called Smart Growth Initiative. That's my baby. I don't know where y'all planned all of this with all these warehouses mixed in the middle of it, but Lord have mercy. Twenty years from now, you'll look back at that thing and wonder who was drinking Kool-Aid.
All right, Mr. Swenson.
Carl Swenson, Ethics in Government. I just want to finish off what Mr. Strickland started, so I'll pick up, let's see, and one of his last paragraphs. Keep in mind, any application would still have to come before the Board of Commissioners for approval. Also, why rescind or eliminate something that has been in place for approximately ten years without any negative effect on the residents of those areas or the county? Such a change would, however, have a very negative effect on the property owners in these areas. Certainly could cause a diminution in the value of their respective properties. So he would respectfully request, as many of us would, that you vote no on this unneeded, unnecessary, and unwarranted proposal. It is without merit, without just cause, and most certainly could be financially damaging to the property owners. This goes hand in hand with the plans that they had established back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and they were based on the growth, the growth patterns that we're seeing now. But certain parts of that have just been overruled, so I don't know the importance of actually establishing this anymore, because two years, four years down the road, we may get a different cast of characters, and they may have a different vision altogether. So, you know, something that is, or should be the biggest concern for you guys, in my opinion, is your constituency. You know, what are they talking about? Because I don't think you've really given them a chance to be heard, and I don't think you're surveying the people, you're surveying the people doing the survey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Anyone else wishes to speak? Okay. With that said... Clayton.
Good evening, Henry County Board of Commissioners. Clayton Cartt, one five zero three South Bethany Road, Locust Grove, Georgia. I've had the privilege the past year of serving on one of the committees for this project and interacting with many Henry County residents regarding our future development plans. We held multiple rounds of town halls and public hearing, public open houses, heard from residents of Hampton, Ola, Locust Grove, Fairview. It was an honor to speak with residents about what they want to see in their communities. I want to share some highlights of what this comprehensive plan puts forward for Henry County, but before I share highlights, I'd encourage all residents to go look at the new future land use maps, go look at the new comprehensive plan, and I think they would be very excited about some of the progress we made. Some of the highlights within this update have included encouraging a diversifying of our economic portfolio and encouraging corporate office space to relocate within Henry County. We incorporated mixed use into the comprehensive plan for the first time. Many residents express a desire to see high-quality mixed use, and we added a mixed use designation to the future land use map for the first time. We added programs and policies to improve the visual appearance of our state highways and our commercial corridors. We have a lot of commercial activity in the county, some of it was built twenty, thirty years ago, and it would be great to partner with those businesses to improve landscaping or street lighting or other elements of the visual appearance. We worked on the future land use map to restrict further industrial sprawl in the State Route one fifty-five area and encourage future industrial growth to infill along I-75 and along major highways. We also are working to add new programs and plans to expedite transportation improvements within the State Route one fifty-five industrial area. We worked on the future land use map and spoke with residents to be more selective about future commercial areas in our rural neighborhoods like Ola or Luella, and be more thoughtful about where we want commercial along rural state highways. And finally, we added and are encouraging programs for stronger protections of the most rural areas of the county. Many residents want to see, you know, our faraway areas stay rural, stay farmland, and we certainly hope to work with those landowners in the future as we continue to strive to do that. Thank you Commissioners, and I encourage your approval of the Imagine Henry Twenty Forty Plan.
Thank you, Bill Tony, McDonough. You know, again, looking at this, and I go down forty-two every morning, and I see all those warehouses, and like Larry and a bunch of folks in our group come up with ideas, and they give it to y'all, some ideas and all. Y'all are so smart, y'all don't need anybody's ideas, y'all got it figured out. You got a beautiful county still left, but all you're thinking about is warehouses and apartments and things like that. I'll tell you what, as far as my commissioner, I'm totally ashamed of him because he ain't doing nothing for me. And Mr. Wilson, you met with these folks and didn't even get back and say anything about it. It's just you listen, and then you don't do anything. You know, you can't be a do-nothing bored, except let all the industry in here and just kill you. Like he said, the farmland, they taking away farmland, building buildings. Is that the way y'all want it? Do you want buildings and tractor trailers and potholes and everything else? And you want apartments and all that? Or do you want to keep the county nice? You need to really look at it, and again, Mr. Barham, I'm not happy the way you've been making decisions. Thank you.
Any other comments? Don.
Commissioners, my name's Don Dunlap, I'm at one ninety-two Ashley Drive in McDonough, and I'm not terribly loquacious. I just wanted to thank you guys for allowing citizens to have some input in this process with enough time that I could share with my students, folks that are going to be around in twenty forty and need to have a voice in this, that they could actually participate in that. So some of those responses that you got were from some of my kids and their parents, and I appreciate you guys allowing them to have a voice in their future and not just making a decision without them. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, that completes the public hearing. I ask if any other Commissioners have anything to say? Commissioner.
I want to circle back around to Mr. Strickland's comments real quick. I just have some concerns, you know, people from Henry County and been around Henry County have purchased property that was slotted to go commercial, and it didn't go because we had the economy turn down, and now we're putting it on the future land use maps, not commercial. And a lot of these people, citizens, have invested quite a bit of money into this property, and I don't know if it's the right thing to do to change it kind of midstream on them. You could say that it's a risk they take, but when the county has led them in a direction, and then we change directions, it does concern me, the impact it will have on citizens. This isn't the only person who's contacted me with a very similar reference. As far as my district, my district's, I hadn't had any complaints called, I had some folks with some concerns like this, and we went, we worked through them to make sure everybody was on the same page. But I don't want to vote against this, against somebody else's district. It's, you know, I would be offended if somebody came into my district and voted against our district and what we want to see. So I'm a little bit torn here. Mr. Strickland has a very strong point. This property was purchased with the intent to go commercial, and it is not anyone's fault that the economy downturned. It was a national phenomenon, so it's hard to point the finger back at anybody, but it does concern me that we're going to cause harm to a constituent and to several of the constituents in different areas, so I just want to make sure that the district commissioner is aware of this and has at least reviewed this.
Jared, may I respond?
If you don't mind. Oh, one more time? May I respond? Just very briefly, the future land use map has nothing to do with property value. It has to do with a projection based on analysis of how property trends, develops, character, et cetera. The particular property, if I recall correctly, is currently zoned RA. That's our base zoning. The current future land use map does have it, the frontage of that ten acre roughly tract, commercial, but the remainder of it is rural residential. So, based on the character, how the area has trended objectively of all the data we've collected, there's nothing indicating in the last ten years that that area is going to be commercial. Now, just like any other zoning process, he can come in and request, the Board of Commissioners rezone the property to the zoning of his choosing. If our future land use does support it, it'll be like any other case, we'll objectively make a recommendation. If he wishes to amend our comprehensive land use plan, he can amend that. He can come and request to amend it to commercial if that's his desire. We cannot tell him no or yes, we can simply take it through the process. That's the same that we do for everyone, but I cannot allow the future land use map to be kind of clouded as a negative when it's not. It's simply just trying to look at where we're going, and that's the area that we're talking about now does show it as rural residential right now.
Zoning, and let's back up. When we talk about trending over the last ten years, we all have to realize there was the Great Recession. So trending may not be trending, it may be a fact of economics. And when we talk about property values, no, the future land use map does not dictate values, but we all know a commercial piece is more valuable than a residential piece. And I just don't want to harm any of our constituents and citizens that have lived here a long time and have planned on this for years by changing midstream something that they have put time into, thought into, and because the economy went down, they're being now punished. If the economy had not gone down, we don't know what would have happened. It could have trended that way, that could be all commercial, I don't know, but we'll never know. But it just seems difficult for me to vote to negatively affect a citizen's property who was moving in a direction, and we've now changed directions midstream on citizens that live here. And that's my point on that.
Commissioner Clemens.
I have a question. Did you say, and I want to make sure that I heard you right, that this property presently is residential agriculture, but in the future, it's going commercial on the front?
No, the current future land use map has just the frontage of the property currently as commercial, and that was based on ten years ago when we went through the same process. The remainder of the property currently is designated rural residential.
Any other questions?
On District One side, we have the same issue. There's some properties that's on eighty-one, the New Hope Road, that's going to be converted back to RA for the land use map. Why is that? How come it don't stay in the commercial area?
If I heard you correctly, you're asking along Highway eighty-one in District One...
Yes, it's west of the New Hope, it's a stretch of property on this future map back to RA. Explain that to me, especially on that busy highway, please.
Sure. Along Highway eighty-one, as you go east from, this is used, City of McDonough as the center point, as you go east on eighty-one, the trend is you go from commercial to less intense, some of it still residential, to a lesser, lower density residential, to more rural. So there's a point along eighty-one where the current future land use map adopted ten years ago did have activity centers or nodes of commercial where the intent was to develop just kind of a little strip center where the rural parts of the county had some type of commercial access. Well, it didn't develop that way, and as far as the development goes and the trends and the character, the further east you go on eighty-one, the more rural it is, and that's just, that's just how things have trended and how things are today. Now, in ten years, who knows? I don't predict the future, nor do I claim to predict the future. It could trend to where we have a boom, the Highway eighty-one is widened, and the commercial businesses flourish all the way to Newton County. But as of right now, we don't have the data to support maintaining the commercial nodes that we once designated in that area currently. Right now, it's rural, and that's what the data shows us, and that's what we're basing it on.
Yeah, when I'm looking at the map, I'm looking at diagonal C-one, C-three, down, two lots down to C-one.
Are you looking at commercial zoning or commercial future land use?
These are actually buildings in place that's actually surrounding this property, that's going back to RA.
Well, understand, zoning and future land use are different, so as it's zoned, it can develop as it's zoned. If they were looking to change the zoning from commercial to something different, then our recommendation will be based on what the future land use shows, and so that's based on the character of the area. So as far as those nodes that you're referencing, one thing I'll do tomorrow, I'll get with Jared to go to zoom in on that part of the map and see exactly what's going on, and to see if that needs to be updated with the future land use map based on the current zoning. There's a possibility that it could have been broad-brushed accidentally, but I'll check on that, but with respect to your question and trends and character, if the character of that area is generally rural residential, then the majority of what you will see is a rural future land use designation.
Thank you. Any other comments by any Commissioners?
Dante, I appreciate all y'all's hard work on this, but it appears that we've got some unanswered questions out there that needs to be addressed, and I would like to see us have a little more time before we make this decision tonight.
Well, the thing is, we're governed by the Department of Community Affairs. Tonight is just transmitted to them for review. Edits and additions and corrections can be made through October, which is the deadline, October thirty-first, so time is of the essence, and we don't want to violate the law requirements for us to get to have this transmitted to DCA for their review. And these map items are relatively simple. We can go in, look at it, and see if there's an individual parcel that was grouped with a neighboring parcel. We can do that. That's a simple fix if it needs to be fixed, but as far as that prohibiting this being transmitted to DCA, that's a risk that I would strongly encourage you not to take.
Well, I just don't feel comfortable moving forward tonight.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the future land, the future land use map that has been presented before. As I know from me, from my district, the people came out, I shared it on Nextdoor to make sure that people could come out and have a say-so. I think that we're looking at twenty forty and not twenty twenty, and I think that you guys have done a good job, and just like Mr. Perkins said, this is about the future of Henry County and not yesterday of Henry County. So I would like to make the motion too.
So we have a motion, can I have a second? Is there a second?
I'm going to make a second so we can talk about it, because we can't talk about it until somebody's second, so I'm on second at this time.
So, I have a question Dante, I think you said, even if we approve this tonight, we can still amend it before October?
Yes.
So there's nothing, no risk in approving this?
No, tonight, you're approving it to be transmitted to DCA for their review.
So we have a second, so we'll open it up for comment.
And I would like to say to the Commissioners, there was a parcel, and I'll just share this with you, on Jonesboro Road in District Two, that was multifamily, or it was a mixed use, and the people said they did not want that in the area, and it was real simple to have the community to talk about it and get that changed. So I would just like to say, I have watched the community be able to say what they didn't want, and the changes be made, but you got to get your people out, or the Commissioners need to speak up before tonight, because I mean, this has been out for a long time, and so that's why I'm able to say that I'm pleased with what happened in my district because I was involved, and I made sure that the people came out and spoke. So you can, I know that it can be changed if you have some issues with it, but I do know that there's a deadline of October thirty-first. Yeah. Yeah.
So let me see, this can be tweaked after we get back?
It can be tweaked between now and October 31st.
And even in Mr. Strickland's case as well?
Yes, if we find that there's a valid reason, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're about to call for a vote, I think of. Commissioner? Understand. Yeah, but Dante.
I'm in the real estate business. I've got a little bit of a grip of that's what goes on in the real estate business. And if there's something out there that's not being, not having any effect on the economy or any of the citizens, why are you in such a rush to abolish it?
Dante said that this can be amended, and so my suggesting, my suggestion would be to sit down with your commissioner and try to amend the map that's satisfactory for, for, for your property or your, or his, his district. But we're gonna move forward with this vote, and I don't disagree with you, but we have to send this up to the, to the ARC.
But it affects me, and I would respectfully request that you set aside my property from this until it is further inspected and done.
Yeah, I would.
And so I've never been notified of anything.
Yeah, what I would do, I would set up a meeting with your commissioner directly after this, this meeting is over with. So, Commissioner Barham?
Yes, I'm, since we can't amend this by October 31st, and now what happens if we can't come to the amendments that we want to come to by the 31st? What happens?
Then we'll be in violation of the law requirements by the Department of Community Affairs to have this adopted this year.
And then what happens?
And we could possibly lose our local qualified government status. Well, I'm.
Qualified local government status. If we have grants that are funded through the state, we could certainly jeopardize receiving funding for those grants as well.
Commissioner?
Public hearing.
The next year we'll be to adopt it.
The amendments will happen between now and then in discussions with the board of commissioners, myself, county management, and the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Prince?
I'm going to support this because we need to get this done. It has to go through, but I hear you, Mr. Strickland. And we can make some revisions, and we'll make sure we look at this. And if anybody else has any questions like this, we can make revisions as we go, but this has to get pushed through. I understand the importance of this, and if we don't push this through, it's gonna affect this county bad.
I have another question. Even if it goes through with the property where it is, I want to make sure that Mr. Strickland has the right to come before this board to ask for a zoning change for his property too. That law still is in place. And even if this goes through, Mr. Strickland is gonna be okay as long as he has his commissioner's support to change that zone.
Any other comments? Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second. So I'm going to ask for all in favor. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is another public hearing, a resolution to transmit the annual update of the 2018 capital improvement element to the ARC and DCA. Stacy Jordan presenting.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the transmittal of this annual capital improvement element update. This is for the period between July the 1st of 2016 and June 30th of 2017. And so this is a report that was put together by the Finance Department as well as the Henry County Water Authority, and this is something that is required by DCA. They reserved to themselves two months to review it, but it has to be approved and adopted by October 31st of this year. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
This is a public hearing, so we'll ask anybody who wish to speak in favor or against, approach the microphone. And you have three minutes. Anyone wish to speak against or for? You have three minutes. Stacy, can you, can you?
Yes. So this is the capital improvement element of our comprehensive plan, and it has to do primarily with impact fees and how they are collected and spent. So the report includes the figures on the interest that has been accrued and so forth. And so this is a report that's due to the state every year, and the hearing tonight is to transmit it to the Atlanta Regional Commission for the Department of Community Affairs' review.
So, one more time, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak for or against this item, please approach the podium. Okay, no one wishes to speak on it, so that will complete the public hearing. Any commissioners have any questions? So I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is leisure and public services. It's a resolution to declare three houses, three house structures on county property as surplus. Rod Gray?
Good evening. This, this item is to request approval to declare the following addresses surplus. 851 Spragons Memorial Parkway, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281, tax ID 045-0101-3000. 613 Spragons Memorial Parkway, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281, tax ID 045-0101-6000. And 1035 Fairview Road, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281, tax ID 045-0102-1000. These structures were houses located on the property when Henry County purchased the land. The structures are in disrepair and no longer serviceable and are of no productive value to the county. The request is to designate these as surplus property so that the fire department can burn them for training purposes.
We have a, we have a motion. Would any, anybody like to move since the chair's not voting? Move to approve, all right? You have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, and I appreciate you bringing this. This has been an ongoing thing with the surplus properties. But at this time, Ms. Matthews, will you share with us how we gonna move forward to let the citizens, how, how we gonna get rid of some of this other surplus property?
Yes, sir. As we discussed this morning during our workshop meeting regarding capital projects, more specifically some financial options or other additional revenue streams, what we're doing is we have asked our chief appraiser to prepare a booklet of all county-owned parcels of land. And we've had it for some time now, and what we're in the process of doing is looking at those parcels and determining if we have any current or future use for the properties. And what we'll start doing is bringing resolutions to the board if we determine that we have no need for those properties, and then going through the process in terms of declaring it surplus, similar to what Mr. Gray is doing this evening.
That's a great move. Commissioner Clemens?
How much land is this property on?
One second, please, ma'am. All right, the, the serp, the one at 851 Spragons Memorial is 1.2 acres?
Fire department?
Yes, we'll, we'll retain the land. A lot of it's at our, a park and a senior center. It's, it's just unsafe. It's.
I was just trying to see the correlation with what we were doing here and what Commissioner Baum was talking about. I just thought, this is, we're not making, we're just getting rid of this surplus property.
It's not safe, and it's, it's terrible looking.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. And I'm just gonna ask that there are no personal texts on anybody on the board of commissioners or our staff. Please direct all comments to the chair, and please ensure that all comments are related to county business only. Who do we have, Stephanie?
We have three speakers tonight, Bill Tony, Larry Maury, and Carl Swenson, and they'll have five minutes.
All right, do you, because I have three minutes on here.
Three minutes? What happened to five?
How do you, oh, I got it. All right.
Come on now.
I gotta get my rhythm. I gotta, I have to get my rhythm. Okay, you ready?
Again, I want to bring this up. We've been bringing, I've been bringing it up at meetings. I'd like for the county to, and the commissioners to really get behind these people trying to work with this, this child trafficking stuff. These, these ladies in this business, I mean, that's trying to stop it. They're doing a lot of good work, and y'all really need to be on board with them. I brought this to y'all's attention about two, two months ago, about I filled up my pool, and the water coming out of the spigot looked like that. I don't think anybody here would drink that water. I don't think anybody here would probably jump in that pool, or anybody out there. Now, I brought it to y'all's attention. That's strictly out of my garden hose, and that was that green right out of the hose. Now, we're paying, we're paying a guy to run that water authority over $300,000 a year. I brought this up to y'all. I haven't got a phone call. I don't know of anything that got done about it. If any one of y'all have talked to Lindy Farmer or anything like that, I'd like you to hold up your hand or something like that, because I think y'all, it just fell on deaf ears. You know, you don't care, or I don't know. I don't get it. We're paying y'all. You're not there as volunteers. We're paying you to do this. If nothing else, give the man a phone call, intend to get, get with the program, or either get rid of him. He's evidently not doing his job. We put out a lot of money over there with the two mills. Y'all need to repeal that. Two mills going to them. Over $13 million a year goes to the water authority. That's straight out of our tax. Evidently, we're overpaying the guy over there because he is definitely not doing a good job. All right, last but not least. That right there. Ethics in government has been getting threats. And they're telling us, they're demanding that we don't come to meetings, we don't do any, anything on social media. We just, we're supposed to just go away. Well, I'll tell you what, ethics in government, they're not cowards. We don't run. All it did was tick us off. I'll tell you that right now. We're not going away. We're gonna be right here till this county is done the right way. Now, I don't know, I don't know yet who did it, but I did find out that you can pull fingerprints off a paper better than you can glass. Quite concerning. We've already involved the FBI and the postal inspectors. So for anybody that is childish like this to start sending things like this, and by the way, the no quarters, that's a sign of war. But we don't run. We bleed red. Red, white, and blue. We're gonna be here. We're not running from anybody. And if anybody's got a problem with me, everyone of y'all's got my phone number. All you gotta do is call me. We can get it straightened out. But I'm not gonna run, and none of us are gonna run. You can write, you can carry that to the bank. Now, I don't know, there's a lot of people I'm sure that'll do most anything to get reelected. Well, need to think about it. The FBI sure is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Stephanie?
Mr. Maury.
Please state your name and your address.
I too got one of them crazy letters. So the three things they accused me of, I put them right back on Facebook. It proves myself from being above that. But to be threatened in America, to be threatened in my home county, to be threatening my wife and children, you gotta be blatantly stupid. Because if you try to harm my family, God have mercy on your soul, because I ain't running, and I'm not scared. So bring it on. I've already showed the, I've already cleared my name. So bring on your, your ignorance and stupidity, and us, and us deal with it. Don't hide behind a paper. Come to my face, and we will deal with it. I would like to bring up a couple of things that really concerns me. I saw a wreck in front of the Dunkin' Donut on 155 a few weeks ago. Two women, one woman just literally bumped another woman. There was no major damage done to the vehicles. But here comes seven police, ambulance, fire trucks. So the other day, I was out 81 to the roundabout, just before you go into Newton County. Couple of guys riding motorcycles. They were laughing and joking and talking and with the roundabout, and one of them just run through all them little signs there in the roundabout. It kinda knocked him, throwed him every which way, and pissed him off his motorcycle. And here comes six more out there. Gentlemen, I don't know about y'all, but do you imagine what it costs to run one of those fire trucks down the highway? If you took the average accident and all those multiple vehicles going out there to a fender bender, there's no telling what it's costing. You will never raise the taxes high enough to pay for all of that. Because in a few years, those fire trucks and, and all that other is gonna be worn out, running up and down the road to these fender benders. Surely, y'all need to get a handle on that. And I know you don't get votes if you, if you offend the first responders. But now, there can, there is some stupidity in this multiple units going to a fender bender. When you put six and eight, nine vehicles out there, that gets borderline ignorance. And you can tell them I said that. Also, 911. I, I hope Sherri checked it out the other day. You can call 911. The first they wanna know is, what's your phone number? Well, your phone number, idiot, is in front of you. And then the other day, I called about a semi truck being over the crest of a hill on 81, and you know what? The first thing she asked me after the telephone was, what's the name of the side road? And I, I was just amazed. That would have been the, the last question I asked her. If I'm kinda like Donald Trump, that'd been the first thing after I fired her. That's just how bad it is. I got a minute and 12 seconds. I want to end up with this. I want to go back to that thing we talked about a while ago. When I look, when I develop something, I look at cost. What's it gonna cost me? Somebody should have been looking at these schools that you put all over the county and didn't build a highway to them, didn't build no infrastructure to them. When you build them, you had to go do all that. That's the reason I looked at the amphitheater, putting it in the center of the county, in the center of the cities, where you could get in and out to it. After a venue, where you could go to restaurants right down the street to bring more revenue to the county. I looked at all those things and, and determined that'd be the best place for a venue. I looked at all those things and, and determined that'd be the best place for a venue. But the bad problem of that was to bring it to the county and nobody ever calls me back. Now, I'm developing a 3,000-acre project, and I won an awards on projects that I've done, but to not even be called back is just absolu, it's absolute ignorance.
Thanks, Mr. Maury.
And I know I won't get a call back.
Stephanie?
Mr. Swenson is our last one.
Mr. Swenson, please state your name and address.
Carl Swenson. I'm in Stockbridge. What's the address thing for? Just in case. 43 Thurman Road. To start off, Mr. Smith, I'd like to make you aware of something that's going on in your, in your jurisdiction, and that is the, the properties that are at the, almost at the intersection of Thurman Road and Fairview. They, they are adjacent to the school that's, that's right there. Okay. There's some buildings that are going to be, I think, torn down. They are in a half-state of being torn down right now, but they have been determined to be laden with asbestos, which requires a very special treatment. They're doing this almost like in the dead of night. I don't know what's going on there. All I know is I see that it's in a, in a state of deconstruction right now that has all that stuff disturbed, and that's the whole point of keeping it safe. Just, you might want to look at that, please. The other thing is, we are dealing with a serious problem here. I don't think I saw any of you at my, at my, at the town hall meeting we had concerning human trafficking, child trafficking, sex trafficking, pedophilia, and all that stuff. But you should have, because you might have learned something at the time. This is a problem that's not going away. I see a lot of people putting their heads in the sand. Some here did not. Some actually assisted me in getting this going, and we're going to get more of these going. To that end, there's a, a meeting that is going to be set up with the G B I, and we'll try and get the FBI involved in this, too, on the, on the pedophile issue, on the trafficking issue. As you noticed in the, in the news today, we had two 15-year-old girls that were mentioned. One was being tra, well, both of them were actually being trafficked because one was by a police officer, and that was really frightening. The G B I does, definitely needs to get involved in this, and the denial that any such shenanigans are going on in this neck of the woods is a little, for lack of a better word, ignorant, because it's going on all over. If you can't see it, that doesn't mean it's not happening. We've got evidence that it is. So if you are interested in joining with Chairman Pitts from Fulton County, and we're working on Clayton County, too, if you're interested in being part of this proactive meeting, please contact me, and we will make sure that you get the date and time certain so that you can be there. It's important. We need to get a grip on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Stephanie, any other comments?
That's all.
Okay. So that includes public comment. Next is the approval of the minutes for July 17, 2018, a regular board meeting, July 24th, public hearing regarding the millage, July 24th, public hearing regarding the millage and the community block grant, July 26th, public joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners, H D, H C D A, and the Z A B, and July 31st, public hearing and adoption of the millage. With that said, I'm going to ask for a motion. Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments regarding the minutes? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Prince?
I just have a quick question for County Manager. I've got the pay classification. Looks good. I'm actually quite impressed. The question I had, I don't see on here stormwater. I know it's an enterprise fund, but I didn't see the stormwater director, and am I just missing that?
There, the Stormwater Department, although it is an enterprise fund, should have been included. I'll, let me check and see what you have, because all of the director's salaries were included on there as well, or should have been included. It may have been on a separate sheet, and I'm not sure if that was handed out during the meeting today, but let me verify, and I will certainly provide that information to you.
I see engineer, when the engineer's going to be, I'm sure, you know, this engineer here and this engineer, the building department's going to be the same pay, but I just didn't see that.
And, and that's a good point. That's one thing that we've asked the consultant to go back and revisit in terms of the classifications for the engineers. We have an engineer one, two, and three. So we have provided some additional information, so it may have just been omission, but they are a part of the study as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Clemens?
I had an email that came in from a citizen that wanted me to make sure that I thanked the D O T department, and more specifically, he called them Johnny and the crew for some work that they did on McCurry Road, and he just wanted me to state that they always do a really good job, they're always nice and friendly, and that he thinks that that's one of the departments that go least noticed, so I'm thankful to have that email to come in, and if you all would definitely let them know that I mentioned them tonight and that they got a great review from a citizen.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Baham?
Yes, I thought it was a great workshop this morning, and the comp plan is long overdue, and I'm really excited about that. The only other thing that I'm going to say, and this could kind of be viewed political, so I want to be real careful what I say, but as far as this letter and this hate group, I have had nothing to do with that, my family hadn't had anything to do with that, nor anybody in my campaign, and I'm not going to say anything foul about it. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? All right, well, I'll open it up for the County Manager. If you can, can you talk about the, the classification study, the meeting you had this morning?
Yes, sir. What, if you don't mind, I do believe our H R director's here, and if you don't mind, I'll ask her to come up and give a brief overview of the information that was presented this morning.
Good evening, Commissioners. I apologize, I don't have any more material with me because I didn't realize I was going to have to speak, but I can certainly give you a summary of our meeting this morning. The Archer Company has, over the last several months, completed or conducted, I should say, our class and comp study. And what we, what we were presented with this morning is a summary of the findings and recommendations from the Archer Company. And what you should have received was a folder that had a classification list of the job classifications. We started with 518, excuse me, job titles, excuse me. And the Archer Company, at our request, has reduced that number down to, in the material that you have, to about 330. We have asked him to make some further reductions so that we could eliminate all the duplications of titles. You also received a structure of our classifications in terms of the pay grades and in terms of the salary ranges. So we currently have about 50 grades in our compensation structure, and he has provided a list of 36 grades, so that has been reduced as well. We also received information regarding benchmarks for certain positions within the county, and there were, I believe the number was nine counties that were used to do our market comparison, and I believe there were seven cities that were also in that information as well. So that's been provided for our market analysis, and we will be coming back before the board in September with a recommendation for the board to adopt what was presented. If you have any further questions, if you could send those to me, I'll make sure that I can get the direct information from the consultant prior to coming back before you in September.
Thanks, Doris.
Thank you.
Any other comments from staff?
One other comment, and it's not a comment from the County Manager. I actually want to defer to the County Attorney to update the Commissioners on the pending litigation for the city of Eagles Landing.
So you, you're all aware of the lawsuit that was filed a month or so ago that actually named you as defendants. The Superior Court ruled in that case, it's gone up to the Supreme Court for appeal, it's, that process is pending. To, either yesterday or today, and I'm sorry, I don't know the exact date, there were two new lawsuits filed in federal court challenging the new, the acts creating the city of Eagles Landing on two different grounds. One was actually filed by the, Capital One is the bank that holds the city's bonds. The other was filed by a couple of residents in the area to be, in the area that's potentially leaving Stockbridge and going to Eagles Landing. None of those lawsuits named the county as a defendant, nor you. They both name your Elections Director, and one of them names the Board of Elections, which is, while the complaints seem to allege wrongdoing on their part, they really don't. The, the Board of Elections' only role is to conduct an election if required to do so by law, and today, the law requires them to do so. So I just wanted to let, let you know of those lawsuits. There's no reason to do it in executive session because you're not a defendant, and I'll be meeting with both the Board of Elections and Ms. Lunsford over the next couple of weeks to decide what course of action, if any, will take, but I just wanted you to be aware of it.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay, great. Upcoming meetings, we have an August 28th meeting at 9:00 a.m. It's a joint meeting between the Board of Commissioners and the Henry County Development Authority. September the 5th at 9:00 a.m. is our regular board meeting, and September the 18th at 6:30 p.m. is our regular board meeting. Any other business, executive session? Okay. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. So move. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Adjourn.